We'll start without you. All right. I'll call the West Dakota Water Development District meeting to order here on May 12, 2024. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands on one nation under God, indivisible and liberating of all.
Next item is the roll call of the members. Dan?
Roll call for March 12, 2024, West Dakota Water Development District. Code here. Bierke.
Here.
Driscoll. McGregor. Here. Ackerman.
Here.
Row.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
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 And we have one absent. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 9, 2024 meeting. Is there any issues with the, if you had a chance to review, any issues with the minutes? What's that? Oh, sorry. Approval of the agenda today. I take that. I'm getting ahead of myself. Any items need to be changed on the proposed agenda for today's meeting?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Did you already do that?
What's that?
Did you already move approval?
I did, Chris.
I second.
Oh, okay. Scott moved. Craig seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, item four is approval of the minutes from the January 9, 2024 meeting. Any items on the minutes that needs to be addressed? If not, accept the motion for approval.
I need to approve the minutes.
Moved by Craig, seconded by, seconded by Robert. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, conflict of interest disclosure. Is there any items on the today's agenda that any of the directors would have a conflict of interest? If so, say so now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Treasuries Report, number six. Yeah? Let the record know that Director Driscoll has shown up for the meeting.
Aye, aye.
We're on item number six, the Treasuries Report. Dan?
Okay. We have revenue to date $12,529. That would be tax levy and interest. We have the interest of $468 approximately. Total funds, which include savings, checking, and four CDs, is $716,020. Our total non-project expenditures are $8,332. Total project expenditures year-to-date, $4,484. So our total expenditures today, $12,816. So if there are no questions, I'll go to the projects, which are all listed there with the grant amount, how much we've paid, and how much balance is remaining in the right-hand column. So the total balance remaining, you might call that our liabilities, comes to $311,407. And then I have a Gantt chart there with the various projects and the timelines. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. What's your questions?
I see the expected minimum tax levy for this year is $249,756.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions for Dan on the Treasuries Report?
I guess I'll add that we have a CD coming due in May, so we may have to discuss that at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the Treasuries Report? Moved by Ron, seconded by, seconded by Thomas. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number seven, approved pursuing development of a proposal slash application to the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources for watershed improvement projects within the boundaries of West Dakota Water Development District. That's Director Driscoll's item. If you want to introduce your guests and...
Did our guests arrive?
We got, we got one over at the corner.
Oh, they are.
I'm here. But I don't know much about it. I'm mostly here listening, so I'm as informed as you are.
Okay.
Chris and Paul are here. They took a wrong turn. They were just in front of me, and they turned north on Dolly Lane. Do we want to continue on with this item?
No, let's, let's, let's hold off till they get here.
Actually, I see shadows out here.
Okay, so just pause then.
Let's just pause for a second to see if, if they arrive.
You guys are just in time. Your item is now up for discussion. Just perfect timing.
Got enough chairs, I guess, huh?
Okay, so we just got done actually with, with two meetings here this afternoon. The first of them was with several staff from the School of Mines, you know, discussing the possibility of, of the mines, erosive areas on the mines campus being one of the areas we might address under a 319 project. Now, I guess the guidance we've had to date, it would be a good idea to talk to some of the primary potential partners. So, following that meeting then, we had two people from the city came in for a second meeting. We just stayed there at the meeting room on the mines campus. So that was Scott Anderson from the Parks Department, who we've been working for on our Star Village project all along. And then Roger Hall, who is the, the city engineer, you know, we're looking at some other potential areas besides the Star Village area. Another very good candidate would, would be a similar flat top hill just about a half mile west of there. It's called the Hillcrest area. It's located between Fifth and Mount Rushmore and immediately west of the Star Village area. So there's a fair amount of privately owned property in there. And then there's a couple of major city-owned areas that are eroding really badly and straight down into the Storms sewer. One is on Clark Street. I know Director Bierke's seen that one on the west side going down into Mount Rushmore. Then I just became aware in the last few days, the, the area that's just south of the old high school there, which is on the north side of South Street. Anyhow, it's just, it's just as you go west from Fifth Street on the, on the north side of that Hillcrest hill is, is a big chunk of city property in there that's very erosive. And so we talked about those as two potential candidate areas, you know, having done a little bit of scoping on costs, you know, I think areas like that would be very easy to fit in within a 319 initial project. So I guess with that as background, I'll just turn it over to the combination of either Chris Dozark or Paul Lorenzen, whichever wants to lead off and kind of fill folks in on, you know, what few wheels have turned and what your thoughts might be as far as where we'll go next.
Get the mic.
Dan, I want to pass the mic over.
Yeah, I get the mic. There you go.
Chris Dozark with Department of Ag and Natural Resources. I'm our 319 coordinator. Yeah, as far as this project goes, October 1 would be the project implementation plan due date for a, for a plan. With that, the money would be available probably June or July of 2025. I think this would have a very good likelihood of getting funded. Yeah, just initial talks, mainly thinking about, you know, these erosional places here in town, and then also working with Conservation District to throw a part of that. Right now, they have a NRCS CIS Conservation Implementation Strategy that they're working on, but at some point that'll go away and maybe this will pick up, you know, kind of where they leave off and be able to fund some stuff downstream, kind of ag practices, something we're a little more familiar with than, than this stuff in Rapid City. But I guess, I don't know if there's any questions, but I'll, I'll take any questions at this point.
Have you been talking to the Conservation District?
We just had some very initial conversations with them earlier.
Okay.
Also talked with our, our folks from EPA to make sure that this didn't fall under the MS4 for the city of Rapid City. With an MS4, they have to deal with like stormwater issues, but this would, this would be considered a non-point source issue, so it'd be outside of the MS4. So this stuff would be eligible under the EPA requirements, I guess.
Okay. We, we do have projects that we've funded with the Conservation District out in the valley. I don't know if you were aware of that.
Sure, yep.
They're doing some, some similar kind of work down there right now.
Yep.
We haven't spent any money yet.
I did, I did talk with the folks from the Conservation District on Thursday, last Thursday, at their monthly meeting. And so, you know, I had, we thought about trying to arrange a meeting, you know, with them, and as it turned out, it just didn't work out. But, you know, they're very much interested, but, you know, one of the questions I actually forwarded to, to Chris and Paul, the documentation on that CIS project, so the proposal that they had submitted, and then there's a fact sheet. And so, you know, they're, they're aware of the details. Now, one of the real questions would be, is there really a way that we could dovetail that project in with a 319 project? You know, to me, it wouldn't really necessarily be straightforward how it would work, but they, they very much are interested in being a partner. Now, one of the ways it could work, having talked with them, you know, specifically about some of the details, when they have people applying or signing up for, for their program, basically they have a ranking mechanism that sort of set up, the more of these different potential practices that you apply for, the higher you rank. So I mean, whether it's things like, you know, buffer strips, riparian management, grazing management, stream barbs, et cetera, the more you sign up for, the more, the higher you'd rank. Well, it could be somebody needs, just they'd like to do buffer strips, and so they don't rank high enough to get funded. Well, it could be one where we could say, here, we could just work with this particular landowner. So, you know, regardless of how it goes, they're certainly interested in, in staying tuned in with what we're doing, and if there's a way to partner, they will. One other discussion that, that we had, it was kind of separately, but it was with South Dakota Highway Department. So one of the other big erosive areas really stands out going south on 79, right out in Scott's area, the Black Gap area, you know, right where you cross out of the Rapid Creek Basin and start down into Spring Creek Road is just half mile up there. You know, the, the highway construction had never healed from the, you know, never revegetated properly, and there's a fair amount of it in there that may be natural as well. So I, I had a discussion with the lead for the environmental person in Pier, and then it turns out that Chris and Paul had talked with him already about kind of another topic, but we haven't, we haven't arranged to have a collective conversation, but they know they've got a problem and they, they want to do the right thing. So I think it's fair to say that, you know, they would be on board working on something like this, so.
We, we kind of see this as like a long-term project. Mostly they start out as three to five years, but a lot of them have different segments. For example, the Belle Fouches Project is on its 10th segment. Big Sioux Project is on its fourth underneath this name, but they've been doing it a lot longer than that. So, you know, as we talk about these things, we don't have to solve them all in a three to five-year timeframe. We can, we can go over time to address most of these issues. With 319, there's a 60-40 match, so EPA funds are 60%, and then we got to find match, non-federal match for the other 40%. Just want to state that before we get too far into it, but...
What are you required for administering these projects? I mean, would we have to have somebody administer it for West Dakota?
Generally, that's how we, usually we have like a project coordinator. I think all of our projects have one specific person that kind of goes and deals with everything for the project. And then each, each of these projects has a sponsor, which West Dakota would be probably the main sponsor, which is where we would take our EPA money and send it through you guys, and then you would disperse it from there, and then we reimburse you for that.
Is that something, the administrative cost, is that something that would be included in the project cost?
I believe so.
Because, you know, we're, we're kind of a voluntary group here, except for Dan.
Right, yep.
So I'm just thinking about how we administer the project.
Yep.
Was it correct that typically you do hire a project coordinator as part of your project costs?
Yep.
That's your most typical scenario.
Yeah, so the Big Dakota, or the, Big Dakota, Big Sioux has two project coordinators, one and a half. One's leaving, but I'm guessing we'll get another one. Belle Fouches has one. The South Central Project has four project coordinators. They have a large area. Belle Fouches is funded through Respec, and they have one project coordinator. So, yeah, a lot of them, all of them have project coordinators. I believe the, the new Prairie Coteau Project, which is essentially our northeast glacial lakes and upper Big Sioux combined, they have one project coordinator now, but they're looking for another one because they have enough work to do to, to get another project or another person fully funded. So, yeah, that would be our, our hope is that we could get, you know, at some point, a, a permanent project coordinator funded through 319.
Okay. Ron, Ron's got a question.
Yep.
In the initial application that we would presume to submit in October, what would be the, the scope, you know, financial scope of the first segments that you guys have been talking about? How much money have we gotten in total?
So we, so in the last probably three or four years, we've gotten about $2.7 million, $2.6, $2.7 million. The state DNR Watershed Protection Program, we take about $850,000 of that to fund our 14 full-time employees that we have under our program. And then we take the rest of the money and basically give out to these projects. Right now, we have six active projects in the state. All of them have come in within the last two years. For example, last year, the Belle Fouches came in for $899,000, and that was an amendment to their original plan for this segment. That was fully funded, and then we gave $1.2 million to the South Central Project, and they came in for about $1.3 million. So in the last two, three years, we've been running up against what's been asked is about what we've had. Prior to that, we usually get more asked than what we have, so we end up cutting back some funds. But the last two years, I would say it's been pretty light on cutting, cutting funds from projects. So we have anything from our information education project comes in for a three-year grant, and they ask for about $300,000, $350,000, all the way up to Belle Fouches, South Central, Big Sioux, they'll come in for a $2 million ask, and we might cut them back to $1 million if we have it. So nothing's asked for the moon, and you can get cut back and get half the moon.
What, what, what have you guys been talking about asking for the moon? What are we talking about to ask for, for this first segment of something to be in the Black Hills area?
So I think the initial...
A million dollars or 500 or what?
So I think the initial thought from Dan was probably around 500,000. But I guess the, the first thing in, me and Paul's mind would be, you know, with these erosional areas, we kind of want to get an understanding of, you know, how much these would cost to do it. Like, we want it done right, engineered, you know, get the whole kit and caboodle, see how much it's going to cost, and then probably come up with something after that. But we're thinking, yeah, 500,000, maybe as an initial ask. I don't think we'd have an issue.
So Respec is one of your projects, you said?
Respec is a sponsor for the Belle Fouches. Not the sponsor, the Belle Fouches River, partnership is the sponsor.
But they're kind of the engineer on, on that work, I assume.
They are kind of the administrators of, of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I offer a comment?
Sure. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, like, I need a mic. All right. Jay Gilbertson, I'm the manager of East Dakota Water Development District. I'm also the chair of the State Non-Point Source Task Force. We get to review all the grants that come in. And as Chris has alluded to, we, we've been involved in these projects going back to the late 90s. Certainly, you know, for a new project, you know, it's good to start with a number because then the state guys have some idea what to maybe block out if somebody else comes in with a bunch. But I think first and foremost, and Chris was kind of going there, you need to figure out, what are you going to do? And what's it going to cost? You know, a bank stabilization project, you know, along a stream or, you know, a creek or something somewhere, or, you know, on one of the eroding shale banks down at La Croix, you know, translate that into so much a foot, and how many feet do you think we can accomplish in a period of, in a given period of time? And then you can figure out, oh, here's how much money we're going to need. It'd be looking at hiring a coordinator, and as Chris allowed and asked a question, yeah, all of the projects have a formal paid coordinator. Now, in the case of Big Sioux, South Central, Prairie Coteau, and the INE project out of the Discovery Center, there, the sponsoring agency has hired that person, and they've got a full-time staff. For the Belle Fouches Project, the local sponsors have engaged Respec to provide that technical assistance. I expect in part because those partners don't have the ability to hire somebody and keep them. An early issue we had, this was 20-plus years ago, you know, your local conservation district would get a 319 grant to do a watershed project on Lake Campbell, Brookings County. Dan, you know where that is?
Yeah.
Lake Campbell Valley Creek Watershed run through the Brookings Conservation District. Well, they made about 12 bucks a year, and so they'd get a grant and they could hire somebody. But the person they hired knew that on the last day of that grant, they were out the door because the Conservation District couldn't keep them. And that particular project, we have five different coordinators in a 30-month project span. Every time McDonald's would hire, we'd lose somebody. And so what's happened, and that's the way we've gotten involved and, and some of the others, is the, in the case of the Big Sioux Project, the East Dakota Water Development District, the project sponsors contract with us to hire the people. And so Barry and Amber, technically she still works for me, work for me. We have a contract with the project sponsors to provide services, administrative services, and staff time, and the grant pays for a significant chunk of that, and that would be an option, you know?
So we could get some examples from you then?
There are some examples, yeah. James River, South Central Project, James River's the sponsor, they do the hiring in the northeast. The Dade Conservation District has managed to, to make it work, and so they, they hire that person. INE is run out of the Discovery Center in Pier. Soil Health, they've got their own hire, and then Bell has got Respec working kind of on a contract basis. They're kind of the odd man out, but on a continuum of activities. But, and for the most part, the lion's share of the support for the staff comes out of the 319 grants. Okay? And most historically, what, what's been found is there's money out there to do stuff, to do the dirt and diesel, the actual on-the-ground practices. What's typically missing is the funding to hire the guy to go out and sell the product. You know? NRCS has got money laying around in wheelbarrows right now. They just can't get it out on the ground quick enough. And so that's the project sponsor goes out and sells programs, and frequently those programs are somebody else's program, but they're still accomplishing the same project goals.
Did you have another question, Ron?
Yeah, so I have one more question before I just done. So in theory, let's say we ask for $500,000 because that's what we thought we needed. Is it likely that West Dakota would be ponying up to 200 grand that it'd be required for the 40% match, or are there other players? Or we don't know?
Well, we do have one other option. We do get about $200,000 from our state Clean Water SRF. State is a state revolving fund, which counts as state funds, which would count as match. And usually we give those to our newer projects as they build their, their partners over time. So generally, we would, you know, probably with this initial one, you guys would probably be pretty high up in the rankings to get, you know, a good portion of that 200,000. And then we also count like in-kind match. Yeah, and then like if the city was to be involved, if they're reviewing engineering plans, that could count as in-kind match towards the project. Yeah, and then we talked to the School of Mines, they might be able to, you know, help out in some stuff, so.
Did Roger say anything about the city or?
Well, the, the city, you know, in terms of the city putting up money, you know, it doesn't sound real optimistic. I guess I'll, I'll throw a couple more perspectives at it. You know, for starters, I start out thinking instead of half a million, 600,000 to, to simplify the arithmetic. So, so what that requires is 400,000 in non-federal, the 40% of the total. EPA puts up 60% of the total, correct? So out of a million-dollar project, they'll put up 600,000, and then you have to have 400,000. So, you know, the 200,000 that you threw up is, is 40% of half million, but there's a big distinction there. So when we're working with the, the public entities, you know, to what extent could they actually contribute funds? You know, Roger was pretty hauled, the city engineer says, don't count on anything, you know, the, the new mayor and everybody's trimming budgets, and, you know, that's probably the realistic perspective. Another side of it, so looking at the School of Mines campus, if you're headed west on St. Joe, you go past the School of Mines, past the stadium, and then there's a trailer court there at the corner of St. Joe and St. Pat. And so if you just pull into that trailer court and then hike up the hill above... And so if you just pull into that trailer court and then hike up the hill above the stadium, up there where the windmill sits, well, that property owns, um, th- there's quite a bit of property that's owned by that same property owner in there that, that, uh, needs work. There's a good solid acre or so of blowout. Uh, it's an 83-year-old woman. I talked to her here a couple times in the last couple of weeks. I'd actually initially talked with mines about maybe proposing a very small little project there that we would start this year. And I talked with the, the lady from the, the trailer court. I thought, this doesn't really sound good. You know, I'm told she's 83 years old, that's to convince her to, you know, spend money. I went and talked to her, I said, we'd probably ask you to pay 20% of the total cost. She says, no problem, you know, it's a big mess back there and, and I'd be happy to. So, you know, you can't exactly take that to the bank at this point in time. But I, I do envision that we would be working on private property in some of these circumstances. The Hillcrest area, um, very specifically, there's a, quite a mix of private property there. And, and I think that in those cases, you know, it, it seems to make sense that we'd say, well, we'd offer something along the lines of, you know, splitting that 40%. They'd put up 20, we'd put up 20. So there's a lot of these details, I think, remain to be worked out, but, uh-
Did you talk to this lady's heirs?
No.
You got anything else to add?
Um, no.
So you guys say something?
Yeah, um, you know, coming up with match, and as Chris said, as, you know, projects get started, it's a little tougher. Um, assessment work, which is where we initially got involved in this activity, then there, you know, there's no real obvious partner to do the work, but you still had to come up with a 40. And, and, and we mostly did that. For more of the implementation side, which is fixing the problems that have been identified, as, as Dan said, you know, in, in some instances, in fact, in most cases, the programs don't really, 319 doesn't really fund 100% of the fix. We're working on Ron's, uh, field, trying to, you know, rebuild something and, and do whatever else, which is going to have certainly a public benefit, but also be a tremendous benefit to Ron. If somebody else pays for it, Ron's not all that excited about, if, if it works, great. If not, eh, who cares? I don't have an investment in that. Now, there are exceptions like some of the Rikers area buffer work that's done around the state. But by and large, most of the, what are called the best management practices, the B M Ps that, that get implemented, have a built-in requirement of, you know, landowner match. You need to have skin in the game is where it works out. And, and, you know, in cities, it's maybe a little more complicated. But I suspect for the CIS work, the, uh, NRCS funded stuff, uh, down below town, you know, those landowners are contributing to the cost and, and their contribution is, can be part of that match. Um, you know, if your project involves all bank stabilization and you're able to access some NRCS money, the NRCS component of that work at a given, you know, landowner's, uh, area won't count as match. But if that landowner is, you know, they're doing a 50-50 match on that, that match, that landowner contribution can count as match against the watershed project as well. So there are ways to get creative, uh, on, on how that works. And the initial way, as Chris has alluded to, and I was here, I'll hold him to it. That is, um, provide some of that, that, that good state money. It doesn't even be matched.
Well, I think as, as a board, and we, you know, if you can provide us some information on, on some of the projects that you guys worked, so we can get a better feel for what was going to be involved, how much effort it's going to take to do these projects. Cause we're, you know, say we're all volunteers and Dan's part-time. So we, we need to have a clue as to what the total scope's going to be and how much work's going to take to, to make it work.
This, this would take, this will take a full-time person. But yeah, this is not something that you can do part-time.
Okay.
And no, and again, the, the board, you know, the boards are, I can't think of that situation where any of the boards are involved to any great extent. Other than Belle, they're kind of a little more excitable. But, um, but even when a, a project is run, and again, uh, the Day County, uh, the Prairie Coteau project, um, yeah, they, they hire, you hire somebody to do, to run the project. And they will get the paperwork done, they'll, they'll, they're out there banging on doors. They're harassing Ron because he still hasn't cleaned up, you know, the stuff he's supposed to be doing. Um, and-
I have another question.
Is he talking?
But, and, and, and they're available too. I mean, again, as you know, Dan is, Dan is part-time. The office is open Mondays from 1:00 to 4:00 and Tuesdays, Tuesday, every other Tuesday, Thursday morning and leap years and stuff like that. Well, you need, you need somebody who can go out and talk to, you know, to Thomas when he's available. And sometimes that's going to be at 8:00 at night or 7:00 in the morning or both. And so having, you know, that staff is, is really critical.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, this one maybe is for Chris, I don't know. Um, so the general range of one of these coordinators, um, what, what do they cost on an annual basis?
Seventy to eighty probably.
Seventy, eighty thousand?
Yeah, take-home pay is pretty good.
I start now probably 60 to 70.
What's that?
Start now probably at 60 to 70, I don't think you want to. But then we, we generally play, pay for health insurance, paid days off.
Yeah.
Kind of set it up like it's, the state employee would be set up.
Okay.
Yeah, I go through with, with my folks, the, the, you know, Barry Berg, who's been doing this as long as anybody right now in the state. Um, and, you know, every quarter I sit down and the accountant hands over, here's how much you got paid and here's what his health insurance cost and here's what all the benefits came along with. Um, that, you know, you really need to do that because, as I said earlier with the, the Lake Campbell project, otherwise you're hiring a new person every 20 minutes. Um, and I just pencil in, we get, right now we're contributing 10%. We're probably going to raise that to 15 or 20% in the near future. And so whatever that number is, I send Barry a bill for 80% of that and he runs it up the flagpole and we get reimbursement.
Okay. Uh, Dan?
So one more, uh, kind of topic, subtopic I'd throw out. You know, the work we've done to date, you know, Star Village has been kind of our flagship project, uh, pilot project, you know, learning our way through it, uh, you know, almost entirely volunteer labor kind of Band-Aid, keeping it from getting bigger, which, uh, we've done, actually shrunk it just a little bit. Um, obviously that's sort of approach doesn't work for the, you know, scale we're looking at. I mean, we're looking at basically shifting to, you know, contractors to, to do this kind of work. So, um, you know, I had penciled out back of the envelope, I'd never done it before. I'd always looked at Star Village. I thought, well, I wonder which side of a million dollars this would be. And, you know, by the time I add up how much dirt is involved, it really isn't that, that much. You know, something on the order of 100 truckloads at, you know, a couple hundred dollars a load. You know, I mean, it, it's a lot less than I thought. You know, I, I come up with ballpark could be somewhere between 15 and $30,000 an acre, depending on low end or high end, uh, uh, you know, at Star Village, we're talking five acres. So it could be under 100,000, it could be over, but, uh, you know, order of magnitude, um, I've got a starting point. Well, the, the important thing, I guess, is, um, you know, I'll let Chris elaborate a little bit more. But if I understood everything correctly, you think the state would be in a position to, you know, basically come up with engineering estimates as a, as a starting point before we actually submit an application to be done as, to inform us for preparing the application?
I think we would be, we could help financially to fund engineering plans, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think our, and this is, this type of, uh, implementation is a little bit new to us when it comes to, when we vegetating a hillside. Um, so, yeah, we would be looking probably at getting, uh, FMG or Respec or some engineering firm to kind of tell us how to do it correctly.
Yeah.
Properly. Um, and, yeah, I think, you know, paying for that engineering plan, I think we could help fund that.
Are these other coordinators you're talking about, are they, are they engineers or are they?
No.
They're not?
No. Uh, the only one, I don't know if Justin Krasky is with Belle Fouch. I don't think he is.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, most of our guys are either, either have a farming background or some type of natural resource background. Um, generally we work on the east side of the state, so we're dealing more with cropland, agland, grazing lands than we are urban B M Ps, which I would call this one. So, um, I think Barry's dabbled a little bit in urban B M Ps, but nothing as far as this, nothing like this would be concerned.
Rob? Lied?
Oh, okay.
Another question? No. So, am I hearing you right as to, in order to submit this thing that's due in October, for however many dollars we submit it for, we've got to have at least a rudimentarily engineered plan for every site that we put on our docket to begin with. And we have to pay for that upfront.
I would say no at this point. Um, these plans are pretty fluid, like these, uh, project implementation plans are pretty fluid. So like Jay said, uh, you know, if you want to go, I was thinking more on a per acre, um, idea. You know, say we go with a napkin, back of the napkin, you know, let's just say we're going to go $30,000 an acre. Okay. So we're going to do five acres in this plan, so we're going to say 100 and, or whatever, what would that be? 150,000 for erosion control. That could be the line item in your budget and in your project implementation plan. Um, and then in the description, you could say, you know, we're looking at, uh, doing sediment erosion control on areas such as Star Village, uh, La Croix, these types of areas. The nice thing with 319 is it's pretty flexible and it's, it's kind of, you know, it's not locked in place. So if you guys end up, you know, putting in, say you put in your P I P that you want to do five acres and it goes like gangbusters and you end up doing 10, 10 acres. Well, now we can pull money from another line item to fill in, or you guys can come in for an amendment, get more money. Um, I really think the beauty of 319 is how flexible it is.
So Chris, when we talked with the, the facilities manager, head of facilities at School of Mines, Geraldine Roberts, she said that they tend to use a mechanism called a solicitation of interest. They're allowed to float that as a state entity, you know, up to a $50,000 price tag without a competitive bid. So, so basically then different groups would, would come in and say, this is how we would approach giving, you know, meeting your needs. Uh, is, is that a mechanism that, that we would likely look at?
Yeah, I think, I think these would kind of parallel each other. Um, we could work on the project implementation plan that's due in October, October 1, kind of have these line items put in there. Along with that, can, kind of go down this path of what's it really going to cost to do Star Village, um, in these other areas with an engineering firm to kind of see the true cost of those. Um, so, yeah, in my mind, they would kind of parallel each other would be the preferred method. But if October 1st rolls around, before we get that plan in place, I think we'd still be all right to kind of fund, fund this project.
Well, if, if we were to put out a solicitation of interest, in theory, any interested firm would say, here's our, our proposal and basically we, we sit through and we say, okay, here's the one we like the best. And so we're going to go with this group. And then they're telling us what would it cost to give us, you know, basically cost estimates initially. I mean, you, actually, this is not real heavy-duty engineering, it's more your cost estimate. So, I mean, it, it sounds, I guess my impression is that a mechanism as simple as that, however, however exactly we go about it, it, it sounds like D A N R would be able to support the cost of the, the front-end work. So I guess to me, if it turns out someone says, well, it's going to cost you a million dollars to, to get your estimate, well, you know, like, we're, we're dead in the walk.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Right. So, you know, I, I guess to me, uh, everybody's in agreement that, you know, we need to have a better cost estimate than Dan Driscoll's spreadsheet. And, you know, I'm comfortable with that, uh, the way I come up with it is I talk to dirt people, you know? What's it cost to haul a load of dirt? I know having, you know, paid for some hauling, you know? What's it cost to rent a dozer? You know, I can go out and rent a dozer and I can run that dozer myself. Well, it's going to be way better to have a firm do, or a construction company doing it, the whole nine yards. You know, they got the trucks, there's places they're going to need excavators and, you know? So I don't expect, you know, a problem coming up with credible cost estimates. And the fact that the state can support that, you know, to me is a, you know, a fairly major step in how do we move forward? So.
On the, the timeline issue too, as, you know, Chris has noted, the 319 applications are due on the 1st of October. But, you know, even if you turn it in, you might see the money by June of next year.
Right. Yeah, that's what you said.
There's a, there's a long, there's a lot of hope. An application needs to come in on the 1st of October. It's as good as can be prepared at that point in time. From there, you know, staff will go through, the task force will do its review. There's really another two and a half months-ish, two months anyway, before there's any sort of even informal discussion, that's the task force meeting, which is usually in mid-December. So if, for whatever reason, the engineering assessment of what, what, what it was going to cost per acre to do the work wasn't actually done on the 1st of October, or the 25th of September, so you could get into the October 1 app, that's not a deal breaker by any means. Um, and if something changes and this is not uncommon, you know, after the task force meets and after the Board of Water Natural Resources makes their final state recommendation in early January, it's still six months out before anything shows up. And within certain constraints, the 319 program has been, our, our cohorts in Denver have been pretty flexible and willing to work with, with the state and project folks on adapting to what needs to be done.
Okay.
So at this point, I'd, I'd put this on the agenda as a voting item in case we would elect to vote on it. And I think it would be helpful that, that we, you know, make a statement of our intent on this. I mean, we're not bound to anything at this point in time, but, you know, we're, we're asking, you know, the watershed, uh, protection group to, you know, invest in the front end. I think it's the right thing to do. So I'm going to move basically according to the wording on item seven there to approve pursuing development of a proposal slash application to D A N R for a watershed improvement project within the boundaries of our West Dakota Water Development District.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, uh, Robert. Okay, discussion on the motion. Any discussion from the boards, board directors?
I got a question.
Okay.
So, so this approval is just saying that we're, we want to continue on researching and finding out? We are not putting any money down? That would be a separate agenda for, uh, motion later on?
Right. I mean, we'll, we'll have costs coming up in the future. But in the, in the near term, I would continue to work with Chris and Paul and talk. I mean, a lot of what I'm doing is what a project coordinator would. And we would reach a point where, you know, you know, it could be, we have someone for Respec. Uh, you know, I don't know if this justifies a full-time initially or not. But, you know, you're going to reach the point, they have to turn in paperwork, progress reports, things like that. You know, we would definitely need, you know, a project coordinator at some point in time. But in the short term, I would work, continue working with Chris and Paul, you know, to identify some of these potential high priority projects and get some cost estimates and keep coming back to the- coming back to the board. It's pretty, it's a fairly involved process, you know, we, I don't know exactly what we're getting into. I've never been involved, but I know it's more involved than just going up and going down and signing up the 83-year-old lady from the trailer court to do a whole project. So anyhow, that's, that's correct, Tom.
I answered your question.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 All the same sign, motion carries. Thank you for coming out again and it's been very informative. Thank you very much. Okay. I have number eight, update on the West Dakota Regional Water System status. And Cheryl Chapman is here and is going to give us an update tonight, afternoon.
Thank you, Dan. And I will return at the next meeting also with a grant request. Western, Western Dakota Regional Water was fortunate enough to receive a state water grant, which requires a match for a million dollars. We would need to raise 250,000. So I'll return with a grant request at a future meeting and give a more detailed progress report. But what I wanted to just visit about today is some ongoing work that is timely in terms of perhaps if you have input for me. Elevate was fortunate enough to get a National Science Foundation grant under a category of having students address complex community problems. And they thought of us in terms of putting in that grant, which was maybe 10 months ago. And I said, we would be happy to work with some interns on the water project and kind of forgot about it because it had been so many months. But late, late last year, they were notified, they got the grant. And as of the first of February, we were able to get three interns from School of Mines, two engineers and one science major to work with us on analyzing data with a particular focus on small systems in the Black Hills area. You might recall, I've talked about one of the items that we uncovered, if you will, as we've been data collection out in the whole area, is that in five counties alone, there are 350 small systems. Many of them are one well and one pump to serve a residential area. Some of them are campgrounds and other small areas like that. And oftentimes, if there's difficulties, there's quite a challenge there. And you might recall too, that Mark Mayer came here maybe two years ago now, something like that, and talked with you about the challenges they have in trying to help keep the permits up to date with all of these groups, provide technical assistance where they, they are able and so forth. And so the interns that we have, we are focusing them on small systems, data collection and understanding. And it's been very interesting that all of a sudden, we've been getting lots and lots of anecdotal information, if you will, about, I didn't have water for a week, I had to haul water, I had to go to my sister's to take a shower, et cetera. And we're trying to look at areas that are of particular need in terms of additional water, more reliable water sources and things like that, as we kind of get that data entered into the system. And just to give you a sense, I believe in the ballpark, in your geographic area, and I don't have, I think I've split out one of the districts by, for one of you, but we have about 140 of those systems that are your constituents, if you will, in terms of that. So I, I just wanted to make you aware of this activity going on. It's a direct impact and I, we hope benefit to all of those citizens who get their water in this fashion. And if you have any information within your districts of a particular water system that is having some difficulties, or we know of some that are not able to permit any more houses in their areas because there's no, not enough water capacity there, those kind of things, we would sure like to know about it and continue to kind of build our records and databases for that. And we'll continue that.
I can think of three, since I've been on board, certainly.
Yeah. Yep.
Water system. And the other one is Rockerville.
Yep.
And Nana's one of that. And the other one was a, a water system out by the, towards the airport, I forget the name of it.
Dry Creek Estates?
What is it?
Was it Dry Creek Estates?
That doesn't sound familiar, but it was a small system out in the area on the, kind of just west of the airport, I forget the name of it.
Okay.
That's the three that I can think of that have come to us and proved help since I've been on board.
Well, that's very helpful. And so if other of you have had, people contact you with any particular problems and things like that, please let me know, perhaps Dan, let, Dan, is it okay to let you know when you get ahold of me? That would be, that would be great. So we only have the interns for this one semester, so by the time I come back in May, they'll be almost done. So I appreciate a chance to just visit about this a little bit right now, and we'll keep you posted on their progress.
Okay.
So.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Just one comment I wanted to draw your attention to on page 10 of our packet today. There was a, must have been just an arrest and take care of their, all the totals.
I didn't provide any information, so I'm not sure.
It's in the packet, on page 10, there's a chart. Versus, there's that, that total that West Dakota has already invested in this, after this, 165,871 versus the 14871. Maybe our most recent contribution that was done last year about this time of $25,000 was just left off inadvertently. And so I guess that, we can talk about that, I guess, when we come back, but when we provided that $25,000 last year about this time, looking back at the minutes, there was already an over amount of match that was, had been acquired. So the $25,000 that we provided was basically something to put in the bank for your next match need. So I guess keep that in mind as you come back for more money. We already put money in the bank and paid it forward.
Right. And we were fortunate enough to get some additional grant money that requires more match, so we're, we're pleased with that. We need it for the feasibility study and very much need your support as West Dakota.
Yeah, I, I talked to Cheryl about two weeks ago, I think it was. And you'd indicated that you, because I asked you that question.
Yep.
Who, who you asked for money and you gave me a list. And I think you said the city of Ox Alder had, and what was the other one that you had?
West River Lyman Jones.
Yeah, West River Lyman Jones has said that they were going to contribute some money.
And we have that money in the bank now, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. And so are making additional requests throughout the region of our members, so.
Well, it'll see in May.
Will do.
Thanks for telling me.
All right.
Thanks for the update. All right. Okay, moving on to number nine, funding request from the US Geological Survey for being a sponsor again for the 2024 hydrology conference, which is coming up on the May 18th at the Monument. And before we start, I'm going to make a motion that we give USGS sponsorship money again this year in the amount of $2,000. Second. Second in by Scott. Now, open for discussion. Galen's here, you can.
Sure.
Give us a little update on that.
Give an overview here, so Galen Hoganstraw, I'm a hydrologist for the US Geological Survey, but here to represent the planning committee for the Western South Dakota Hydrology Conference. So just to clarify one quick thing, so the funding goes to the hydrology conference itself, USGS is just part of the planning committee. So just here to represent the, the planning committee for this. But as the request says in the packet, this is the same sponsorship that we had last year, and this is kind of the post-COVID era routine, I guess, for, for where their conferences develop since then. $2,000 is for a sponsorship. It's, this event, if you're unfamiliar, it's a, you know, it's a gathering of scientists, engineers, the public, other government agencies, talk about the current state of some research projects regarding water resources and hydrology and really all earth sciences in the Western South Dakota region. So I usually get about 200 or 250 attendees. It's a very, a very good group that's very passionate about this stuff, great networking opportunities during, during the breaks, just to meet up with some of your peers and catch up with what everybody's doing. So as, we kind of spell out your requests here, the sponsorship from West Dakota, you get recognized in the program, you have an opportunity to talk during the luncheon if you have any announcements or other recommendations you want to make, put up a poster, basically whatever you want to do. We just simplified the registration, I think, starting last year and decided every West Dakota board member and staff gets, gets free registration, just so you don't have to deal with that. So I guess the second half of the Western Coast sponsorship, and this is something that's carried on for a long time, is it's, we sort of named the, the luncheon speaker has been traditionally called the John T. Lox Distinguished Lecturer. And it's, there's a biography attached in the funding request about who John T. Lox was, a former board member and had a, a long history of supporting conservation efforts in the Dakotas. So just a quick note on that. Other than that, I've got an updated program if anybody needs it. This is posted on the website currently, but I'll send out a reminder email to everybody on the list later this week that gives some more details. But for the most part, we've got a, a very nice program lineup this year. So just pause and take any questions if anyone has any.
What, do you have field trips this year or?
So no, no planned field trips this year. That's another thing that's kind of been, I guess, the, the most recent years, it's, we haven't done it. The last few years, we tried it, just ran into many logistical issues with mostly weather-driven, just became too difficult to plan and we kind of had the attitude of, if there's one that makes sense, if somebody really wants to do one, we'll certainly accommodate for it, but we're not going to kind of force it if, if there's not anything that makes sense. So that said, if anybody has any good ideas for, for field trips in, in upcoming years, feel free to reach out and we'll, we'll certainly explore it.
Maybe you could take them up to Star Lloyd.
Well, I did that a couple years ago, both people.
Both people, okay, I take that back.
I think that was one of the cold, was that a colder, rainier day that, that day? And maybe a little muddy, something like that.
No, no, it was okay enough day, but of the two people, one of them turned out to volunteer to help. It was the old guy, the old doctor guy, oldest volunteer, I forget his name.
Eighty-year-old.
But yeah, Larry.
Larry, yeah.
He, he turned into a volunteer, so.
Any more questions for Galen?
You think just because you were leading it? Is there an overarching theme for this year's conference?
Great question, you know, the, you know, past years, 10 years ago or so, there was always kind of a theme that we would tie to it. It just kind of evolved, and we're, we're kind of at the mercy of what people submit to us, so we didn't really have a theme. I guess the, we try to still group the session, so I'll just kind of read off some of the first topics here. There's one from Kevin Christian from South Dakota Social and Rural Water Systems on PFAS monitoring the state. There's another one from Josh Strobo and other DNR people on the overview of the integrated report. So we kind of try to have, just have some regional topics. Then the other two are Respec did a West River Regional Water Waste Water Study, and then USGS also has one on some water use trends and water availability. So kind of just an overview of, we tried to just do contemporary topics, you know, so for us, we view that as, okay, PFAS is a big thing, and then West River Water Use, Water Availability, it's kind of a, an overarching theme or topic right now.
Okay. Any more questions for Galen?
Dan, just a point of, of information. John Lox's widow, Bernita, who also served on the Board of Water and Natural Resources, just celebrated her 100th birthday, so.
Wow.
Anyway. Do you know about Lox?
All right. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Thanks for coming, Galen, appreciate it.
Galen, there was a little input that we might have our director say a few words there.
Sure.
Wait and see, but we'll let you know a little bit in advance, so you know.
We'll save, we'll save five or 10 minutes for whatever we need.
Driscoll can't say anything in five or 10 minutes.
Do somebody else.
Sherman.
Just kidding. Got to have a little humor in it. All right, let's see, we're moving on to number, item number 10, Game Fish and Parks Funding Request for Financial Support for the Aquatic Invasive Species Field Operations here in Pennington County for 2024. Ron's going to handle that item.
Okay, so then I think maybe, wasn't it our last meeting? It might have been the meeting before that. Jeremy Kents from Game and Fish was here, gave us an update on sort of operations for 2023, kind of a summary report, gave us a little bit of insight into what they were going to do, but it wasn't firm, you know, at that point. Page 13 of 21 in our packet kind of summarizes what we've done so far in terms of financial contributions. And then following that is the proposal for 2024, and Jake Davis from Game and Fish is here to speak to that.
All right, thanks, Ron. My name is Jake Davis, I'm Fisheries Program Administrator with Self-Prisoned Fish and Parks. Aquatic Invasive Species is one of the six programs that I oversee on a statewide level. So as Ron said, what we're here today is a request for $20,000 to support watercraft inspections in Pennington County. So on a statewide level, Game Fish and Parks has an aquatic invasive species program. Within that, we focus on outreach and education. One of those tools is watercraft inspections. This is where we actually go out and interact with users at an access area or on a roadway, depending on where you are at within the state. Last year, we conducted over 18,640 of these inspections across the state. The way that we approach this is different though, if you look at our water resources, Western South Dakota functions much more like western states with large reservoirs versus central South Dakota and eastern South Dakota, where we have a lot higher volume of water, specifically in the eastern portion of the state, natural lakes. So what we do there is we set up on roadways thoroughfares. The idea is that we interact with more boaters versus setting up at one boat launch where we may only cover one water body. We set up on thoroughfares, including the interstate. The goal is that we have a larger spatial scale, spatial coverage with that roadside inspection station. Western South Dakota with fewer waterways, primary access points, for example, Balfour, we can cover that 8,000 acre reservoir with one inspection station because one way in, one way out. In Pennington County, we cover three reservoirs, those will be shared in Deerfield and Pactola, the primary boat launches there. We've been doing this for a number of years. We received the authority from state legislature in 2018 so that when an inspection station is open, somebody with a watercraft has to stop. So with that, our inspections really increased from 2018 to where they are now. This program on a statewide level costs anywhere from $6,000 to $700,000 annually from Game Fish and Parks. That is funded through the sale of licensed dollars, hard dollars. Now, what we know through the spread of aquatic invasive species, zebra mussels in particular, they impact much more than simply recreation and angling. So because of that, we don't feel it's necessary that the anglers bear the burden of that cost. So we look for partners where we can, primarily federal funds. Specifically in Western South Dakota, we get federal funds from the Bureau of Reclamation, also US Fish and Wildlife Service, and now US Forest Service. Some of these do come with a match requirement. That's really what I'm here for today, is to look for support for that match requirement. Specifically in Pennington County, the match in this case would go to US Forest Service because that money would only be spent on the Mystic District, and because that's only where our water bodies that we have inspection stations would be. That coverage is, or excuse me, that amount is 125,000 from Forest Service, which would be about 25,000 to 30,000 of match. And again, that would only happen on Mystic District, which would be within the bounds of. of West Dakota Water Development District. Beyond that, uh, we have waters, watercraft inspection stations at Shade Hill, Belfush, and Angostura. We utilize U S Fish and Wildlife Service funds there. That match comes from Game Fish and Parks. So again, the big thing here is that, um, aquatic invasive species, specifically zebra mussels, were detected western South Dakota and Pactola in 2022. We did not detect any kind of spread since then, but they have shown to impact, to be honest, much more than recreation. Uh, any infrastructure and water is gonna be impacted the most. So really, anybody that has an interest in water management, surface water, the state, uh, will be likely affected by these much more than anglers. So because of that, we look for partners so that hard dollars are not the only thing funding these inspection stations. So if you have any questions on what was provided, I can certainly get into specifics on what, um, an inspection station looks like. This is our fourth year partnering with Pennington County Conservation District. We also partner with Perkins County Fall River in Butte, but in, uh, as far as this board is concerned, it's Pennington County that helps us hire inspectors for Deerfield, Sheridan, and Pactola. We also supplement with Game Fish and Parks interns. So it's a combination of seasonal inspectors through the county conservation districts and Game Fish and Parks interns doing the inspections, and then Game Fish and Parks Conservation Officers doing the law enforcement that goes along with it to ensure compliance with our current E I S regulations.
Is there a motion for, for this out, out for discussion? Is there a motion? Anybody?
Well, for purposes of discussion, I'll move to approve the request.
Okay, is there a second in the motion?
Oh, second.
Second by Driscoll. Now, open for discussion, any questions for Jake? Now is your time.
Mr. Chair, is the department moving toward developing eradication programs?
So what we do with eradication is we follow the science. Currently, there are no viable options out there. We're hoping, the goal is that you slow the spread so that science catch, science catches up with it. The efforts that have been attempted out there have generally proven to be ineffective, also very costly and time intensive. So for example, there's chemical treatments such as Zequinox, um, that's something that's been used for the eradication of zebra mussels, but it's primarily spot treatment based. Also, when we look at the volume of waters such as Pactola, the cost is in the millions and in some cases, the billions. Uh, you look at de-watering, that's been done in Nebraska, for example, on small reservoirs, worked for a matter of a year or two. It doesn't necessarily protect, on small waters, you may have a couple of options, and it, it may eradicate them for a short period, what we've seen is they've been reintroduced, or it wasn't 100% effective. So when we talk about mitigation and eradication, really, there aren't much viable options. That's why we focus on either slowing the spread, hoping that something else shakes out. Um, there's certainly a number of entities that are working on those options, but right now, um, there's really no silver bullet, to be honest.
Dennis?
So I've got two questions. So I did a little fishing in Wyoming, so I get all their emails and stuff, and went to the Yellowstone, I get all their email. Yellowstone, I saw was doing like a 30-day boat ban, like if you were in an infested water, and they highlighted Pactola in the news release.
Yep.
That you, you had to be out of water for 30 days before it could even go into certain streams. Is that a possibility? And then you also talked about enforcement mechanisms for people not following the procedure. What is that? Like, what are the enforceable mechanisms?
So really, everything goes back to clean drain dry. So the 30-day drying period, if you will, just helps enforce that, that clean drain dry. So if you have a, a live well, for example, and it is not completely dry after leaving a water body, and the temperature is conducive, those vellagers, which are juvenile zebra mussels, can survive for up to 30 days. Generally, it's more like three weeks. So the, the goal is you get to 30 days and everything's dead before you launch. So it's really that drying time, so it's more of a comfort level on, on that. When it comes to enforcement, it's gonna be different again, but it also comes back to that clean drain dry. That's why we have plug rules, essentially. Once you leave a water body, and you're not in the process of either loading, unloading, or on the water, every plug, every bilge needs to be open on a watercraft. That, the idea is there to get every ounce of water out of there that, that can be, get to that clean drain dry. Can't have any vegetation on a trailer or boat, that needs to be removed as well before leaving. So when we do this law enforcement compliance checks, and when we do these watercraft inspection, that's what they're looking for. They go through a series of questions. These questions are tied to a national western database, so that we can see western states' data and vice versa. When we conduct a decontamination, for example, those western states get it. Also, what they get is license information on, of a, a user. So when they get a boat decal, if it goes from Pactola, the next place it's detected is Colorado, they'll know that it was interviewed at Pactola. But when we look at that law enforcement side, when we have law enforcement present, they will write a citation if they don't meet that clean drain dry, which we have, again, in states, uh, administrative rule. Um, some of the other things, if a law enforcement officer is not present, which happens a lot because we're running these inspection stations and we just don't have the law enforcement that can be there 10 hours a day at 13 inspection stations across the state, what we do is correct the behavior. Um, so if we see an individual that has a boat plug in, we note, we note that in the interview, we also in, indicate that individual, they need to pull that boat plug, we'll help them dry if we can, and then we also will do a decontamination if necessary. So there's kind of a, a step process, if you will, and we deem everything off a high-risk, low-risk situation based on where they were last, if they're standing water in a boat, what kind of boat it is, because anything from a kayak all the way to these pleasure cruisers, they can be quite complex. So again, there's a lot that goes into it, and, um, every state does have a little bit different of an approach. These western states, to be honest, um, they have the luxury of fewer water bodies, but also time. Zebra mussels in particular are introduced in the Great Lakes in the mid 80s, they've had this westward movement. South Dakota's typically on the front end right now, although we did see a new detection in Colorado last year.
Any other questions for Jake? Ron?
What do you see as the impact of the 385 project on activity, particularly at Pactola?
Yeah, it's something we've talked about. The question will be if the users go somewhere else as well. So it may impact lower use of Pactola, but will that push them to Deerfield or Angostura or Sheridan? So we expect to see still some use, but at what level that project will have, I don't know yet. Um, that being said, we see variation every year, weather is, is a big driver. We saw lower inspections at Pactola last year, but when you look at what the summer we had, it was wetter and cooler, and you think about what the, the Fourth of July was in particular compared to the Fourth of July of 2022, that impacts our use patterns. But if I had to guess, I'd say we might see lower use because of that, but what we might see instead is that higher use of Sheridan or Deerfield or Pactola or Bell, if those users decide to go somewhere else.
Oh, another question I guess I have is, um, when you run these through September or maybe October, have you broken out the, um, inspections on a monthly basis? I mean, are the use after that? Because, I mean, if you quit in September, October, that's not the end of the boating season. I mean, it's obviously diminished, but it's not the end of the boating season.
Right, absolutely. And, um, what we see for Pactola, for example, use does decline. There's one, two-week period in September that we try and have excellent presence, and it's not because we see an influx of boaters coming in, we see those slip holders leaving. And so you've got boats that are more, there's over 100 slips on Pactola, and those boats that have been there all summer, we see a high percentage that are muscle fouled, so we make sure we have good presence there. Um, once we get into October, it's weather dependent. If it's a nice day, we tend to see a few boats. But when we look at our program, it can't be all encompassing just because we have not been able to hire those staff. So it's 10 hours a day at any given reservoir, and we'll be quite honest about this. That's why we rely on outreach and education, trying to change user behavior. These water bodies that even have inspection stations, there are times of the day that inspection stations are not open. Um, we try and do the best coverage that we can, we change our times to, to try and hit the peak times, but again, we, uh, we don't operate like some western states that have mandatory inspections, closed ramps outside of inspection times, that's just not something that we've done. But we would define the peak boating season Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then also that time when slip holders are leaving, and that's when we attempt to have our staff there.
You think there's gonna be less slip, slip holders in Pact, in Pactola with the construction going on?
It's hard to say. If they can get them in, they, they might like it because they'll have less traffic on the lake. I mean, I think the goal would be to get your boat into that slip, whatever way it takes, and then you might have a lot quieter water body. Um, when those slip holders were in, I believe in 2019, when that lake was high in 2015, maybe, and the, the ramps were closed, um, they had a pretty nice lake, because they were able to still use the, the watercraft. Might be something similar.
Okay.
What are we gaining in those lakes where we've already identified that they're, they're there? What's the value of the program?
The goal would be containment. So what we do is, on water bodies that are primarily muscle negative, that we haven't confirmed zebra mussels, we conduct entrance inspections. So watercraft coming in, the goal is to keep anything from getting into that water body. Pactola, that is zebra muscle positive, we conduct X of inspections.
How about Sheridan and Deerfield?
Those are entrance, because we have not confirmed zebra mussels in those water bodies. So it, it all depends on, if a water body is deemed positive, we catch them going out. If it's negative for zebra mussels, we stop them coming in. I do want to say that these watercraft inspections are for all aquatic invasive species, which we have, I believe, 18 plants, inverts, and fish that are classified as such. Um, so a clean drain dry, that message applies to all of them. Zebra mussels just tend to grab a lot of the headlines.
Did you have a question, Dan?
Yeah, a couple. What, what temperature range do the, the zebra mussel survive in on the boat once you were taken out? And I imagine they get into the cooling system, how do you deal with that?
Yeah, so, um, so as far as the temperature goes, I'll start there. So the big thing that we look for is when they start to reproduce, because they can survive under the ice. I mean, their temperature thresholds allow them to survive in these environments. They don't start reproducing until, current literature is around 50 degrees or so, but there's some new stuff showing maybe colder. But when we start talking about summertime, when they reproduce, they can pro, reproduce prolifically, and what they do is they release these small free-floating vellagers, they're about the width of a, of a hair. I mean, they're microscopic. So, um, if you have, if, uh, water that gets in a boat, it doesn't take a whole lot, even a cup can have vellagers in it. Um, you can't see those vellagers in there. Um, and when, once they're on the boat, um, that's where the big concern and vector of movement becomes, if, if they're in a ballast tank, for example. That water's in there within a matter, if it's three weeks and temperatures are in that 60 to 70 degree range, those vellagers can survive. I mean, they are fairly fragile, but a lot of times, numbers are on their side. Then that water's recycled, new water body, that's one way that they can be spread. Um, so when we look at some of our peak concerns about, uh, transport, it's gonna be mid to late summer when you're more likely to have vellagers in that water body, and then potentially leaving in any compartment that can contain water. Um, along those lines, we also have rules that talk about anglers that can't move fish uh, in bait, or, excuse me, in lake or stream water, that includes bait. So if somebody has a minnow bucket, they're in one water body, if they put that minnow bucket in the lake or stream, uh, they can't take that water anywhere. Basically, that bait has to be dumped out in a recept, trash receptacle at that launch or whatever it might be. But the whole goal is no lake or stream water leaving, because those vellagers, you're not gonna know that they're in there. There's also a lot of information on adult zebra mussels attaching to vegetation, so vegetation is on a trailer or boat, those vellagers, or, excuse me, those adults that are attached can survive for a period of days, might be attributed to a new water body. Now, talking about what happens if they get into a cooling system or a lower unit, whatever it might be, uh, that happens, if you see a infested water body and you have an outboard, I would certainly trim it up every time, because what happens is those vellagers, they can get sucked up into a water pump or something like that, they settle out and attach, and they'll grow, and so you might have a half-inch adult up in a lower unit that you would never believe could happen, but it got in there as a juvenile, free-floating juvenile.
Okay, any, any more questions? All right, the motion is to, uh, asking for $20,000 to give them this year for their program. That's the motion, so, uh, all in favor of that motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Aye.
All right, it passes with one no vote from Scott. Thank you, Jake, for coming, appreciate it. All right, item number 11, update on open director seats. Scott McReagan, do I?
We've got four open seats, I guess, all the even-numbered districts this year.
Right.
Um, I'm still intending to run, but I'm having trouble just health-wise being able to get out and get petitions. Do we have candidates in the other three open seats? Have we identified candidates?
I believe we have.
What are going on there? Okay. Can you tell us who they are?
Huh?
Do you know who they are?
Not exactly, but yeah. I know, I know, uh, uh, Young from, from.
There's one registered on the Secretary of State website, Bill Young.
Bill Young, yeah, he's already registered.
Do we know what district he's in?
Area six.
He's area six, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh.
I'm in four. We've got two in eight yet to go.
Who wants to offer names? Anybody?
I, I know of an individual in two and another in eight that have stated their intent to circulate petitions, I guess, not to count the chickens till they hatch, yeah, I'm, I guess I'd be reluctant to put the names out.
Okay. Anyway, there's individuals in each one of those that has expressed an interest at this point. Is that your statement?
I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay.
Just, you know, if in fact we do not have candidates that show up in any of these districts, it would be the responsibility of the board after November to appoint individuals, uh, as vacant positions to fill those.
That's correct, yeah.
So we should still keep thinking about people that we might entice, you know, to fill those slots.
Dennis is planning, still planning on moving, uh, yet this year, so there'll be a vacancy there that will have to be filled.
Yeah, and Cheryl's giving it up, and I'm still hoping I can get out and get them done. I've just got hell of a back problem, is I can't walk, so I have to drive around everywhere to get things done. They materially changed my district, you know, I used to have basically Highway 79 to the Shinyard River, I've wrapped around, I picked up the west end of the county and a slice across the southern end and then back up here, so really, it's my home area, Black Gap and, and Green Valley that, you know, where I can get petitions, you know, signatures without going, you know, far ways off to, to pick them up from people. And I, I've got 10 days yet to do it, I think, before I need to get them in the mail to ensure that they arrive by the 26th, so.
Did you get a start on your petitions over the weekend?
Yeah, I do have a start on it, I've got about five signatures so far. And Karen keeps telling me she'll help, but, you know, so far, we haven't, you know, so far, the, you know, the weather and the wind, and, you know, I don't like doing it on windy days where the petition seats get blown all the way, get blown off the keyboard, so, you know, but I, I think the point here really is just if we don't fill all these seats, um, we need to start thinking about who we can appoint to the vacancies, you know, after the election in November.
Well, we should know here in, what, two weeks?
Yeah, well, we should know within two weeks who the candidates are gonna be, whether there'll be any contests, so.
Right.
Um, you know, I think all of these, except for mine, we're gonna have new people on board anyway.
Well, if it turns out you're getting down to the last couple of days and, and Karen hasn't come through and helped, let me know. I mean, I, my opinion is that.
I would say, guys, no, I'm certainly willing to provide you with some pizza and beer afterwards, but, you know, it's not that hard a deal, it's 25 signatures, but, you know, sometimes that can seem, still seem overwhelming. I think I got 42 last time.
I doubt they've seen a comment in the two cents column in the paper, and I don't like reading them, but my wife had pointed it out, where somebody was being chastised for helping circulate a petition, which, uh, there could be very good reasons for doing so, but it, it is always best to have the candidate circulate.
Well, petitioning in general is getting more and more negative connotation in this state than in Oregon, so.
Okay.
You know, that's where we're at.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We should, we could adopt what East Dakota Water Development District does, you're not allowed to leave until you find a replacement.
Is that a policy? That's not in our policy, is it?
No.
Not a formal policy.
Also legal, I'd sue, I'd sue on that.
Unwritten policy? All right, let's, uh, continue on here. All right, let's continue on here.
What do you want to do with those that want to leave? Because they want to leave. I mean, does that apply to a director you want to tick out?
I will.
You just get somebody to run against them, you know?
My standard speech to the board, every time this comes up, is my goal is to have at least one viable candidate for every position. If it's an incumbent, fine. If it's somebody else, I'm okay with that, too.
The trick in that being viable.
Yeah. Somebody's got to turn in a petition. And I'm like you, I've got, we've got four open seats. We've got nine directors, two, four, six and eight. And right now, I've got a single petition that's been turned in. So I'm assured there's at least one more in circulation, two more in circulation, but we'll see.
Did your districts get significantly altered?
Uh, yeah, we're collapsing on Sioux Falls, big surprise.
I'm glad I looked because I was all ready to head out, realized where I was going was an area that was no longer in my district.
Oh, yikes. Okay, moving right along here to item number twelve, action on the program administrator contract. Tom is going to handle that?
So in January, we came up with our discussion of what we would be looking for a program administrator. We kind of found out that Dan was still interested, and we had talked with the board, and the board said to the executive board, go see if you can hammer something out with Dan. We met on the twenty-sixth of January. We handed out the document, which is page nineteen and twenty-one. It really hasn't changed too much, other than the sentence on the duration will be that it is two years locked in from August first to August twenty-six, or August twenty-twenty-six, not August twenty. That'd be a really short contract, and even worse than. We had talked about with the one-year option to extend the current contract, so what is on this piece of paper to twenty-twenty-seven. We had started the new contract, if approved, would be at twenty-five hundred dollars per month, paid at the end of the month, which is normally paid, and an annual fee increase based on the Consumer Price Index. And we talked when that, when that index is updated. We, I looked at some of the history of the Consumer Price Index, and I looked at what it's forecast for next year, and it's one point four percent. So I felt like the cap wasn't needed. The board agreed with me on that, so we just left it to keep it simple and not to play around with it too much because, as we've said in many conversations, we're mostly a volunteer board with a part-time admin, so let's not try to make it harder. So after presenting this, my goal is to put up a motion to approve the administrator contract that we had worked out in agreement. I know I've talked a lot.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, did you get that, Dan?
I'm sorry.
Oh, is there a second to it?
I'll second.
Seconded by Craig. Okay, did you get that, hold that review, please?
Uh, just to approve the program administrator contract that we had negotiated with you.
Do you second it?
Uh, they are.
Craig, yeah. So basically, Tom said this is a two-year extension of the current contract with the possibility of one more year after that.
Yep, so we get the three that we had hoped to get.
With the increase in the rate up to twenty-five hundred?
Yep, so.
A month with an annual CPI increase?
Yep. And so this.
Duties and everything else remain the same?
Exactly on the sheet, and so we had talked.
Still rat hole down at the garage?
Yep, except that he has to wash my car on every Tuesday.
You got that?
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion, Dan?
Well, my only thing, or the only thing that's not well-defined to me is when that CPI is applied, would that be the first of the year, the calendar year?
We, we had talked about that because then it would be, it would be.
It's easier, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not specific. I don't want to be the guy that decides how much money I make at the end of the year if it's around, so I.
When does that number come out? Is that a monthly?
October is the projection, and then it's enforced in January.
So based on the October number, it would tick in the first of the year?
Yeah, so whatever, because they'll, they'll, they'll give their projection of what it will be on the first of the year in October. So right now, the analysts all say that they're expecting the projection number in October to be one point four.
So do we need to add that in? We, the contract?
We can put that.
I guess I'm fine as long as everybody understands it would be the calendar year, not my contract period. Is that, do I got that right?
That was my understanding with our conversation.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay, I'm, I guess I'm fine with it.
Really, though, we should put that in, if that's what we're going to do. We'll have different board members here.
Yeah, you say whatever comes out in October is good for January, then.
Okay, we'll, we'll add.
It's implied in January.
Okay, we'll add that language into the, to the contract then, as we just discussed it. So that's part of the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the addition.
Is that okay with the second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any more discussion? You get it all down, man?
Well, let me see here. So what I have, motion by Max, seconded by Karen, to approve the administration contract as presented in the packet, with the addition of verifying that the CPI increase will be applied in January.
Yep.
That's it.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion, Karen. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
Chairs, comments? I don't have any. Any items from directors? I think there's, you got one, right?
I thought you were probably going to update on our meeting on Rapid Valley drainage issues.
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so we, we asked for a meeting with the, basically, Pennington County Planning and Zoning Group, Brittany Molitor and several staff attended. Pennington County Highway Department, they're an MS four entity, you know, relative to stormwater runoff. Did they show up with a total of four people?
Yeah, four people.
Pretty amazed, and, you know, I think with Brittany, were there three plus Roger Hall, city engineer, and we asked Howard Rice, who's been involved on the Hawthorne ditch, you know, one of the topics we talked about was, you know, might it, might the Hawthorne ditch now that it's been abandoned conceivably be used as, in some circumstances, to help mitigate runoff? Just a conceptual thought. Anyhow, the, the meeting was well-attended, there's a lot of interest.
Did you mention the county commissioner?
Actually, right, Lassiter attended, and of course, Dan Malali, our local Rapid Valley drainage issue expert. Quite a bit of interest there, and I think where it might go from a planning standpoint, they need to be looking at a master plan farther east of where they've got master plans now. And they, it kind of seemed like it brought the city and county people together on that. They really shouldn't need our help to find each other, but I think we'll probably end up with another meeting in April and that. Yeah, I, I guess the, the real question was, might there be any circumstances where West Dakota could help beyond the capabilities of what's primarily the county, although a lot of these Rapid Valley drainages head within the city limits and then, you know, leave the city limits. And, you know, everybody agrees there's no shortage of drainage issues. The question would be, are there locations where you could actually fix some of them? So.
Well, there's drains, there's some drains existing, drainings issues out there right now that everybody's, everybody's aware of, and there's already no plan to how to handle it, you know, what to do to mitigate it. So the other thing is that they may be, they may, once this plan group is put together, they may be coming back to us, maybe to ask for some funding for that master drainage plan out, out there by, basically, just west of the airport.
Just moving further east.
Further east, so, anyway, that was.
There was a lot of interest in it, so.
That's an FYI, but it was a good meeting. I was glad to see that many people show up, especially, what's the, what's the county's highway superintendent? Joe, is it Joe Miller?
Joe Miller.
Joe Miller, really good guy. Is there any other items from directors? You got something?
I was just going to comment, part of that was looking at the possibility of using the Hawthorne ditch for drainage, and there seemed to be some skepticism that would have enough capacity to really do too much, if I remember right.
Well, there's a limited capacity there. Of course, the concept would be if you could transmit stormwater for a short distance, at which point you would then have a location where you could, you know, basically let the water exit and, and, you know, move it into some sort of a, you know, mitigation feature of sorts. So I mean, of course, the track record is there's, there's quite a few places already where there is urban stormwater that enters the ditch. I mean, that's been an ongoing thing, and so.
Well, and then the summer adjacent property owners, we're talking about filling in the ditch, too, which really opens up another can of worms as far as diverting the drainage to a different, in a different direction.
There's a lot unknowns there. There had been an impression that, that adjacent landowners could basically obtain the deed to the land, that it's a drainage easement, it's actually has been owned by the ditch company, you know, by submitting a quick claim deed. And, you know, the county people all claim that's not true. Now, whether or not that keeps somebody from just showing up with a popcat and filling it in, who knows, but.
Yeah, this was put in the eighteen hundred, late eighteen hundreds.
It's been there a while.
It's been there a long time. All right, anything else from the directors? All right, Dan, you got any items?
It's not.
It's worded back on.
Suppose out of these, it's actual.
Show me with your hand.
Great.
May I ask a question?
Is this relative to, we're going to get to the public here.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get to the public here after Dan.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, are we on admin?
Yep.
The future use permit has been approved. I'm going to grab a mic here. At the Water Board March sixth meeting, I went and listened to it just to make sure there were actually two approved, Waters was one of them. So this was already approved by the board for the paying invoice we're going to get for eight ninety-five, eight hundred ninety-five dollars. We talked about CDs, election petitions, we talked about, we gave some money, granted some money to Keystone to clear out underneath the Winter Street Bridge. They originally had planned for January, but FEMA found a permit that was not done, but Sandra McClain told me all things are in order now, and they're going to proceed with the work. I was at a Green Valley sanitary meeting, and I guess the bottom line is with the pressurized system, which I think we were briefed on, so far, they estimate the tax assessment will be about a hundred seven dollars a month for thirty years. The cost of service was around fifty. There were not very many happy people there, I'll just leave it at that. There was one person just put in a mound system, and they're thinking, so now we just wasted all this money. Another meeting I was at, the Pennington County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, which looked to me like a solution in search of a problem. I guess it's a FEMA requirement, but there's really not too much to report on that, other than they sent out a survey, and a bunch of us responded to that. There's a PFOS meeting coming up, March twenty-eighth, at the county admin building, I believe. And I guess that's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now, items from the public. As you stand up, we'll get, come back to my mic.
Okay. Oh, it's pretty fancy. Hi, I'm Sherri Nutter, and I'm actually a neighbor of Dan's in the valley. I live off from sixty-six hundred Longview Road. And this, I appreciate you guys wanting to be involved with possibly a drainage plan for the valley. I know the county, I attended the planning meeting, I think it was a couple of months ago. I know they are forming a committee, I, I believe Commissioner Hancock is the chair, and I know they recognize that, they recognized for a while that there's a need, like you were saying. And I just, as a property owner who has experienced some, some issues, I guess, in the past, I wanted to just share, if I may. So thank you, guys, for looking at this and for any help that the West Dakota Water Development can provide. So I live on Longview Road, and it's pretty flat, so that is a drainage opportunity all in itself because it's so flat. In two thousand nineteen, in March of two thousand nineteen, we almost lost our home to the craziest thing. It was a winter storm in the month of March, like we're in right now. It had been really cold, we got a bunch of snow, you guys might remember it, and then, like, the very next day, it went to fifty-degree weather for the next several days. And the ground was frozen, so the water, the, the ground couldn't take in the water. So the water actually started coming to our property from developments and properties to the north of us, because we're lower. There were properties flooding up top, and I know this is a little different scenario, but it just tells you what the ditch can actually do to be a part of a solution for us all. The ditch in this scenario was, was getting flooded with water, and there were properties to the north of us flooding. Someone took a hammer, a sledgehammer, to the gate, to the north of us, there's different gates, and they opened it up so it would relieve the ditch. But unfortunately, the ditch wasn't maintained very well, so it skipped over the ditch and came to us on top of the ground. Long story short, we had, we pumped thousands and thousands of water off from our backyard to save our house. Dan remembers. It's the reason why the county had to put in a culvert now off of Carlin Street because there wasn't one there. But we actually used the ditch, there's a subsidiary that runs to the west of us, we used the ditch to help us save our house, and eventually the road ditched and down to the pond. Anyway, it's just a really good example of an extreme case where it could have been catastrophic if the ditch hadn't been able to be used. It's been really hard on the locals, and I don't know if any of you guys live in the valley, it's been super hard on the local people to have had them sell the ditch, the water rights, anyway, because a lot of our wells have dried up in the last couple of years, and a lot of our trees have been dying, like, a lot of our trees are dying. And that's another, that's like a side thing to drainage, obviously, that may or may not become a, a part of this discussion, but I'd love to see the county and the city understand the impact that it's made to the community and all of our trees that could potentially die. I know it's a side thing, but I wanted to bring it up. I believe that it would be really, really good if there could be communication to the residents, the property owners of the valley and elsewhere where the ditch impact happens, to be a part of it, and, because there would have to be some kind of a maintenance team in order to make it successful. Anyway, I'm, I'm on board to be a part of whatever meetings you guys would have and bring any kind of local input and help, I guess, gather other input if that would be something that you guys would like to see. Anyway, thank you for looking at it, and that's kind of what I have.
One of the things, the county, you know, the county doesn't have a drainage. One of the things, the county, you know, the county doesn't have a drainage fee to properties outside of the city, but the city does.
Right.
So, there's funds available within the city to deal with issues, you know, because they have a financial resources.
Financial resources, right.
But in the county, they do not have a drainage fee, so it's all about money. But the conclusion was there's really not a drainage, master drainage plan like off of Reservoir Road area.
That's right.
There is already drainage problems, and the county is aware of that and wants to do something. The city is aware of it and would like to do something about it to help with it. So, that's kind of what came out of that meeting.
Okay. Do you know if there would be any kind of, I don't know, grants available anywhere to help with the financial?
I don't.
Well, it does seem to be that the county has approved a lot of developments in this area. And as a resident and a member of the county, I feel like there should be some responsibility on the county if they're approving, you know, all the development, that there has to be a drainage plan that goes with it, and that they need to somehow find the finances to do it, or these developments should not be happening.
Well, the city has planning jurisdiction, you know, outside the city number, actually, I think three mile.
Three mile jurisdiction.
Within one mile, they can control it based on their ordinances. So, you know, if there's a new development out there, there's a requirement that you have to study the drainage and see if the development's gonna affect the drainage. And if it does, infrastructure needs to be part of that development. But the oldest places out there that were built before regulations, which has happened all over the county, but that's part of the problem.
It is. And I guess, because we were, a lot of us behind me were very involved in the planning of the Apple Valley development, because we, as neighbors, property owners, we lobbied pretty hard for them to consider a different density for that development. They ended up approving the highest urban density in city limits. And the county did that, and I know we're within the three-mile plating jurisdiction, so the city requires the infrastructure for the water and the sewer to be done, and the roads. The county's the one who approves the zoning, and they approved the highest density. And I don't remember, and I'd need to look to Dan and maybe some of my colleagues, I don't remember a drainage study as part of that ever.
They never did a drainage study, and in fact, they said that a drainage study had been approved, and the person that authorizes the drainage study.
Could you stand by the microphone?
The person that authorizes the drainage study was at that meeting and looked at that, the person, the contractor, and said, "I've not authorized anything. I've not been notarized or informed of this." So, that was a false face lie that they said right at the meeting.
Did you identify yourself?
Linda Hayward.
Okay. Thank you.
Sherry's neighbor.
Okay.
Anyway, so I hope that that's a requirement now. I just don't remember ever seeing a drainage study or any kind of even environmental impact study. And I don't know, I mean, Dan and I have talked about D A N R, Department of Ag and Natural Resources, if there could be some grant funds there, or it just, I guess, some eyes or some expertise that could lend us, you know, some insight. I don't know. It's unfortunate that all this development has been happening. The Hawthorne ditch got sold probably for development to happen. And there's been a lot of negative impact on the environment and on the current property owners that I don't think anyone really thought through or foresaw.
I think the city purchased the water rights on the ditch.
Yeah.
They didn't actually.
They did.
I don't know who owns the ditch now.
I don't know if it's required or not, but there was no notification to any people along that ditch whatsoever about that ditch being sold.
The only people who'd be involved would be the shareholders in the ditch.
The ditch masters and the...
Yeah, the shareholders on the ditch.
Right. And, right. I guess the city, as the purchaser, didn't feel they had to notify.
I would doubt it. I'm not an attorney.
Right.
Scott would have better feel for that than I would.
Who bought it?
The city.
The city.
City bought the water rights.
Okay. But the ditch itself?
I don't know.
The ditch itself, as I understand it, in speaking with the mayor, and also with the Public Works Director, is not owned by anyone. It's just part of the land that goes with the property owner. It's the water rights for the ditch that was sold to the city. And the water rights is what basically allowed them to turn it on and turn it off at different intervals.
There would have had to be an agreement with the stakeholders, the people that are shareholders on the ditch, to sell the water rights, you know, through some kind of a meeting or whatever.
Oh, there was. I'm sure there was, yeah.
But as far as the ownership of the ditch goes, I don't have any idea.
Well, we did buy our rights to that property where the ditch was.
Water rights?
Not the water rights, the land rights.
Did you file a quick claim deed?
I did, and we have a quick claim deed all across the front of our property for our property.
So, you own part of the ditch?
Yep. Supposedly. Now, I'm hearing that the city doesn't care that we purchased our quick claim deeds, and they're just gonna come through with the drainage just without...
I'd ask them.
Any concern about it at all.
You know, I don't know how we can help.
I mean, I know you guys are just a side entity, but sometimes a side entity can be really helpful.
We're interested in if drainage is creating a water quality problem in, say, Rapid Creek. I mean, that's kind of one of our number-one missions, is trying to maintain the surface water and groundwater, water quality within our district. So, you know, these drainage issues, there's some tie there, but very small, in my opinion.
Right.
Well, we had raised this issue with this group that we met with, and it's our intent to try to have another meeting to talk about some of these possibilities. It's certainly a question that we could ask if it would be possible for someone to, I mean, we could announce a public, if someone could hold a public meeting where people could be informed on what is the actual state of things. I mean, one thing I know for certain is that the headworks to the ditch have been filled in, obliterated. I presume you've seen that.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is one of the, there's no turning the ditch back on, you know, I mean.
At least not at those points.
Well, I mean, in order to convert water into the ditch, somebody would have to, yeah, I mean, it was filled in. Somebody would have to say, "Well, we're gonna make this decision." And I mean, not only the intake area had been filled in, there was a diversion dam that is no longer a diversion dam. It's been, you know, basically a hole put in it. And I mean, so, but it would be a question that could be asked. Could there be a public meeting to where people could be informed of what actually has happened? I mean, maybe it's mostly academic question, but yeah, who actually owns that ditch in the absence of what had been a ditch company? Is that academic to you people that live along?
No, no. And maybe, maybe we need collectively to hire an attorney. I don't know, because something's not right with all of this.
Well, that's always a good idea.
Maybe Scott and us need to talk after this. Because I really do feel like there's been some negligence at some level, and there needs, there's a response. In my mind, there's a responsibility by the county and the city who is approving the developments. When we went and talked to the city, they basically said, "Well, all we have is the three-mile plating jurisdiction, and we just have the water rights, so we don't own the ditch, and we didn't approve the density, so that's on the county." You know, they kind of throw the ball.
I would guess the city does not own the ditch.
Yeah. But yeah, they don't. I don't believe they do. I think it is probably just part of the land for the landowner at this point, because there is no Hawthorne ditch company anymore.
Right.
Well, that's a very legitimate question right there. I mean, they told us at this meeting that they are not, you know, basically with quick claim deeds, whether you call it approving them, that they're not, they're not turning landowner, over to the landowners, was my recollection. Do you recall otherwise, Dan?
I think that...
They had a ruling on it from the judge.
Yeah, I think that's true.
So, after so many quick claim deeds had actually happened, then they kind of put a stop to it? Is that what happened?
I was having a hard time following some of that. Yes.
Tom Blain, I live on Anderson Road. I just looked up here quick, and it is an easement. It says Hawthorne ditch is just an easement.
Yeah.
So, there's no right-of-way there. The landowner owns the land, but the easement should overrule whatever the use is, and it should have a predetermined time, or you have to go and get that, be like vacating an easement. So, that'd be my opinion.
Right.
Yeah, it could be.
Well, it could be the same as a railroad grade where they remain in place for...
Yeah, when they abandoned the railroad grade.
Some of those are both. Where I've seen railroad, there's a right-of-way, and some of it's not, but that was quite a battle, too.
Yeah, it is.
I would have another statement when time allows.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is maybe a side note. I'm just, something I'm gonna dig into. I live on Anderson Road, straight across from the new development. Other than their techniques they use to get it approved, I'm not opposed to it necessarily. But there's a couple of, it was one, now there's two, two generators running out there, just for your guys' information, since you're in the water management volunteer business, whatever you call it. Two pumps have been running out there, and I don't know if during their excavation, they hit an artesian well or some other source. They just started pumping it out into the field, and then it runs down to their new retention pond, from what I can see. Retention pond is not standing full of water by any means, but there's a lot of water running down through it. They're pumping it out the other side, over to the south, which I assume, I don't remember the property owner's name, but it goes down to the old ditch, and it's probably running away there. With that in mind, Sherry and Tim lives right next to me, and I don't know who else. I mean, Dan's north of me a half mile or more, but the shallow wells, and they're over across the road pumping water down over the hill that's probably pulling from the sub-irrigation that is still there, and that's a pretty serious concern to me. And I don't know if you guys would have a suggestion other than, you know, I just think of the county commissioners, but who could we go to to have someone look into that or question that, what they hit, and if they're gonna do something about it or just keep pumping water out of the ground? Any ideas?
Well, if they're pumping water, they may or may not have a permit to do that. They probably should have a permit to do that.
Stormwater permit.
Yeah, stormwater permit, or if they're de-watering an aquifer.
Yeah, that's what Mike is...
The D A N R would be involved with that, because overall, they govern groundwater and surface water as far as getting water usage.
One pump's been running, I think, over a month. Am I right, Tim? The one pump, maybe? The other one started a couple of weeks ago.
It used two weeks.
Are they trying to de-water the land or what?
I don't know. I don't know if they hit something, and I, we're in a bit of a dispute anyway, because they've destroyed a couple hundred-year-old cottonwood trees on both of our properties, so we're trying to keep our tongue tied and be professional at the same point, but, so they're gonna take a couple of trees down, but when we both struggle with limited water, and then they're over there pumping, it's just...
Is this a developer, this pumping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whichever. It's probably one of the subs that...
They're probably doing a pump test to support their water system they're gonna put in, see how much they can afford to pump.
Are they, are they on Rapid Valley water?
They will be on Rapid Valley water, so that wouldn't be...
It's a new line. It's not pressurized yet.
There's no water to that source, to that area yet.
But it will be Rapid Valley water?
Right. And they're, they have a line out there.
Unfortunately, the city's across the road. City line's on their side, valley's gonna be over here.
Are they pumping that water to put the water main in?
Well, if they opened a hole that deep to where they had to keep it clear to get the piping in the ground, I understand that, but it's been going for a couple of weeks, and, you know, it's a small hose, and it's not blowing out the other end, but it's still water, and it makes you nervous.
I used to work for the city, and we put a, we provided water service to Johnny Lane.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, that basically groundwater there. That contractor, which was heavy construction at the time, they had to de-water that in order to get that pipeline in the ground.
And that might be what's...
And the sewer line, too, both of them. But that was a short-term...
On a non-drought year, I mean, anywhere at least down in Green Valley, but even where we're up on the bench, you could dig four to six feet and you hit water. So, it might be what's going on.
But I know there's a lot of those wells are shallow out there, too, so, I mean, they could be drawing the groundwater table down. It might fix some of these wells. So, I'm just talking out loud here, but...
I'll start with the county, maybe, and see if there's a permit.
Rapid Valley water may know if they're gonna be providing it.
Hey, you could talk to Dr. Restine, or he might know something about it.
Would they get into it soon?
I think we should...
Yeah, Restine would probably know something about it.
After this, about it, Tom.
Thank you, guys.
I'm pretty sure that would probably be existing water that's there, because at the north end of that, it was a dam that would always fill up and run out, fill up and run out, right across from Anderson. And so, that goes down through that chunk of property, and they're working down on that end, so if they hit that...
Yeah, this is right up in the road ditch, right there by the old governor's mansion. So, it's a, it might be the same source, but it's coming underground sometimes.
There, we did, we did notify the county and the developers that there's definitely wetlands in that area. And again, I don't remember a drainage study, and I don't remember an environmental study, so it's really not your guys' deal, but it is something that we probably need to follow up on. Because if they're, I highly doubt it's groundwater, because our wells, most of our wells have dried up. There's just a few that are left, and those are a little bit deeper.
Deeper, yeah.
Ours was twenty-five foot deep, and it dried up probably within the first year of the ditch being shut off.
I can live.
And then we've been in a drought now for, you know, how long that we've been. So, I think if they're, I think if they're hitting water, they're probably there on top of the wetlands. We kept waiting for some kind of an environmental impact study.
The bath here shows it.
Oh, yeah.
For sure, yeah. If that's not wet, then...
Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's just crazy.
Looks like a wetland.
That's before the development.
Sure.
The development is going right in here.
So, do you guys, do you guys, does that impact you guys at all, or not really? Is that one of the D A N R?
Well, not really. We're concerned if they, if they, you know, when they're building new, in order to build a new development, they're supposed to build facilities to contain the drainage and, you know, make sure that there isn't more water, because you got roofs, you got streets, you got all this hard stuff, and the water runs off of it, so you're not affecting people downstream.
They have put a big retention pond in at the southeast corner of that lowest forty down there behind that house.
Right there?
It's more than adequate. My fear is they're just doing excavation, and they're already pumping water out of the ditch that runs by my house. They're probably...
Is your house on that?
Yeah, I'm just south of the mansion there, the one with the big, long, deep driveway on the next ten acre piece, right there south of that. That's me.
Oh, that's, okay.
There's Tim beside me here. He's just south, and we were both on...
You're on the west side?
Thirty-foot-ish wells.
West side of Anderson Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we solved your problem here, but...
No, I know. I didn't know if that impacts you guys in any way or not, per your mission, I guess, for your district.
We'd like to have siltation, not go into Rapid Creek off of a development. I mean, that's kind of our thing, is keeping them...
You don't want it to go into Rapid Creek?
Siltation, no.
Right.
It reduces the impurity, it's an impurity to the stream.
Well, actually, it's heading right for it, because that comes out underneath forty-four and goes right on over to Rapid Creek at this moment.
I would think your point, though, is you wanna have some retention so it can settle out in the excess.
Correct. And new development is pretty much required. You know, they have to do a drainage study for new development, that requires a retention facility.
I think they need to get their hands on that.
They build them on new development, but the older ones that are there, before all these regulations in there, it's just, you know, you gotta...
Well, that Murphy, Murphy Development, we have no clue if they had a drainage study done on that. And in fact, but we have lots of pictures and stuff of the very... And in fact, but we have lots of pictures and stuff of the very, um- When did you say that was, last March, when they had that storm that come through?
Well, no, that was, the one I referenced, there was one last year too, I think, but the one I referenced was in two thousand nineteen.
No, this one that went through last year, this time last year, um, actually produced water clear to my place. My ditch is six to seven feet deep, they kept digging it deeper and deeper all the time, every time they come to clean it out. But I put a stop to that and that was full and started overrunning during that particular storm. Where all that water come from, I figured out, came clear from up to Copperfield, started at least up there.
Could've.
Came all the way do, down through that whole development and then it got into the Hawthorne Ditch thing and then, I mean, I've got pictures of waterfall after waterfall after, it was just so flooded, it was crazy. And it made it clear to my place. I've been out there over fifty-five years, it's never flooded there. I take that back, in nineteen seventy, when I bought it, water was running across Highway forty-four to the east of my place, but-
Yeah.
There's never been nothing out there before that.
Well, it, it either be the county planning people and their engineering people or the city. I know the city, we were looking when we met this meeting, there's, there are master drainage plans that, within the city, but they're more in the upper regions, not all the way down to Rapid Creek. So, the discussion was, it's something needs, the, the study needs to continue for all the way down to the Rapid Creek.
Right, that's kind of what the mayor said, is they have pretty good plans until they hit the city limits, for the, you know, and then it kind of just, poof.
That's true.
Nothing.
Well-
Well, thank you, guys, I don't know where you guys, if you even really play a role, I know what Mr. Driscoll said, maybe that could be another meeting, but, um-
We can raise the question.
Yeah, we can.
In terms of, could there be some way to inform the public on the Hawthorne Ditch thing? And, I mean, all the issues out here, most of them are beyond something that we can do other than try to help people find answers.
Yeah. I think the good news is that, that this meeting, it was the city and the county, the county highway people were there and I thought the meeting went pretty well and we, we had representatives there too, but, uh, at least they're talking to each other, you know?
Yeah, well, the nice thing is Joe Miller lives in the valley.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
And so that, he's got some firsthand experience.
And some of his employees, some of his employees too, that were at the meeting, lived out there too.
Right. Yeah, well, thank you, guys, thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks for coming.
For inviting us, Sherry.
Uh, is this, you guys all here, there's one group? Okay. Jay, would you like to give a little update, legislative update from your exposure to legislature?
Sure, and we'll go jump quick through here.
Okay.
Yeah, the session, of course, we had, what, two of a hundred and five here earlier today, uh, with us. Regular session has completed, they'll be back on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth for, uh, what's called veto day in case Governor Malm decides to not go along with some of the legislation that's gonna pass. A couple of things, on the, the water side, uh, in general, and Cheryl mentioned this earlier, um, Senate Bill sixteen is the annual governor's, or well, the omnibus water bill, it's not the governor's anymore, apparently she wants, eh, drop that. Anyway, uh, included in the omnibus water bill amongst a variety of things, uh, is the, uh, State Water Resource Management System, or SWORMS, funding, um, seven million dollars dedicated in the current bill, uh, one million of which goes to the Western Dakota Regional Water System, which is the twenty-five percent, or the, the twenty percent match or twenty-five percent match, uh, required. Similar amount is going to the Dakota Mainstem, uh, another regional pipe to somewhere, only this one's going east from the Missouri as opposed to-
That's the one that's going to Aberdeen?
No, uh, Aberdeen, that's WINS. That's the water investment in northeast South Dakota. That is a combination of the web, uh, regional water system, city of Aberdeen and BDM, Brown Day Marshall Water Systems, um, they get five million. They were a lot farther down the line and they're actually putting, uh, pipe and, and stuff in the ground. And so that was where the SWORMS money went, all, all of it went to regional water systems, uh, too, in the development stage and, and then the business project. Also water funding, uh, Senate Bill fifty-three allocates the last of the ARPA funding that was made available to South Dakota. I think the final number was a, just a hair under ninety million, uh, eighty-nine and some string of numbers after that. That will be going out to, uh, sort of conventional water and wastewater projects. The caveat is that for the most part, well, they will have to be projects that received funding from the first block of ARPA money a couple of years ago. It takes a long time to go from a dead stock to completion of a project and there's no way that they're gonna be able to get, a, a new project would be, it would be exceedingly difficult for a new project to start tomorrow and be done before the ARPA money runs out. And so what, uh, staff, what Danner's gonna do is, uh, primarily use the ninety, almost ninety million, uh, to buy down the loans that the two hundred-odd other projects had to take out. As far as I know, there's only two folks that got straight hundred percent grant out of the original ARPA pot. The Western Dakota Regional Water System and then Secretary Roberts' Pet Project, the RBI program. Everybody else, you may, you maybe got a big grant, but you also got to take out a big loan. And for Rapid City, for Sioux Falls, for Brookings, for, you know, Spearfish, loans are loans. For Pukwana or Clear Lake or some of the other places, you know, five million dollar grant is great, the accompanying three-year or five million dollar loan is brutal. And so they're gonna buy those things down with that, so that, um, that's working out well and that, both of those sailed through, both, I think at this point have already been signed?
Not yet.
Or fifty-three hasn't been signed, fifty-three hasn't been signed.
But sixteen, yes, has, yeah.
Uh, sixteen has, so there'll be, that money will be available, uh, will be allocated presumably by the Board of Water Natural Resources at the end of the month, uh, for that, and then, uh, there's a companion, Senate sixty-six, that uses some ARPA money to give to state projects, gatefish and parks, universities and that kind of a deal. The other, uh, big money bill of, of interest to this group, um, Representative Odenbach, who was sitting next to me earlier today, uh, introduced, uh, House Bill twelve thirty-five, originally calling for dedicating all one hundred and thirty million of the ARPA money to clean water and watershed projects, which I, as Chair of the State Task Force, thought was a wonderful idea. As a member of the State World Water Board and knowing full well that people like Cheryl and, and the regional water systems are out there, thought it was a, knew it was a horrible idea that would never go anywhere. And it was intended to raise the awareness, uh, it got modified down to five million dollars and, and, uh, general funds and ultimately was killed. Lot, had a very good hearing, a lot of very positive comments, uh, there's interest in getting, investing more water, more money in water quality, but that wasn't gonna happen this time around, and so-
Thank God, South Dakota doesn't depend on federal money for you.
Yeah, right, there's, yeah. Yeah, we don't need, we don't need to spend our own money.
We don't, we don't need the federal money in the state, but just find the law.
Yeah, all right, well, I'm not gonna do that. The last bit, uh, well, a couple of things, um, there were a couple of pieces of legislation that dealt directly with water development districts, um, neither one of which would, well, neither of which will, will impact you guys, uh, either now or in the future. One deals with us, uh, first, eleven twenty-four deals with director vacancies that occur when a water development district grows out of its current number of directors into a bigger one. Right now, twenty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand are the triggers. If you're twenty-five thousand or fewer, you have five directors, twenty-five to seventy-five, seven, over seventy-five thousand, you have nine. Well, we are over seventy, you're over seventy-five, there's no eleven-member board number out there, at least not yet. But the difficulty is, and we ran into this with the twenty-twenty, uh, census and then also with the expansion, um, there's no mechanism in place to fill those two new seats. You go from five to seven directors, six and seven, how do you put but, how do you put a button in a chair? I don't know. Or you just wait. And unfortunately, what doesn't wait is the taxing authority, and so we had a case where in, in McCook County's case, uh, they, they will have been paying taxes to the Vermillion Basin Water Development District for about a year and a half before they actually have formal representation on the board. So, you know, that was an easy sell, uh, and we got that taken care of. And so now, that newly created position will be treated as a vacancy is treated now and the, the existing board will be able to make the appointments just as, you know, I mean, I guess, my board will do and your board will do with at least one of these even numbered slots. The other, uh, basin or Water Development District bill was eleven thirty. Basically, it is, uh, took a chunk out of my district, East Dakota, and tacked it on to the Vermillion Basin District, so we now, the Vermillion Basin Water Development District is now actually the Vermillion Basin Water Development District. It goes from the headwaters, um, in the north of Lake Thompson in Kingsbury County, um, most of Kingsbury and down into Minor and parts of Lake McCook, Turner and Clay. So the whole of the Vermillion Basin, well, not the whole of it, but it's a lot closer to being what its name says it is than anything else. We lost a bunch of territory, uh, seven or eight thousand people, which we made up, okay, since lunch in Sioux Falls. So, um, but that process, again, like fifty-three, we're waiting for the governor's signature, we have no indication that there will be any problems, it sailed through basically on consent, uh, through the legislature and provides a mechanism for making that expansion. And then lastly, I will just put out there, um, Representative Odenbach, something I, one of the questions he'd asked me from time to time is during our discussions of House Bill twelve thirty-five was, it, why isn't there something like East Dakota out in the Black Hills? And the answer is, there is, it's called West Dakota, but the answer is also, West Dakota and East Dakota are two totally different beasts for a lot of different reasons, one of which is simply territory. We cover the whole of the Big Sioux River Basin and a bunch of other stuff. You guys are just a sliver of the Black Hills. And why? Well, that's just the way it was drawn.
The way Bill Jankel wanted it.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna defer to the, to the expert on that, but, and he goes, well, can't that be fixed? And Scott knew full well, there, well, I'll get a little map, um, Scott Odenbach knew full well that, uh, we were in the middle of adding chunks to Vermillion Basin and, well, why can't we add territory to West Dakota? And the answer is, you can, there's process out there. And there are examples, and so, um, this, this is a way too early conversation, but it's just something to put out there. There, there currently exists, appears to exist at the higher levels of Lawrence County governance, real interest in what, doing something about water quality. That might provide an opportunity if you all were interested, um, in pursuing something more than being a portion of Pennington County, being in the water, you know, water development district. As many of you are aware, including Mr. Driscoll, cause he drew some of the maps, you know, watersheds don't mean much when some of your water moves underground. And so, you know, valleys, water skips from valley to valley and that sort of thing. And so a Black Hills entity, something the legislature itself, ten years ago said should exist, uh, doesn't yet, uh, this might provide an opportunity at some point, so.
Well, Lawrence County, I mean, Rapid, you know, a lot of Rapid Creek drain stations comes out of Lawrence-
Headwaters are Rapid Creek drainage basin there in Lawrence County?
North of Roche, and it comes this direction.
Yep, and which will be technically part of your potential three-nineteen project. As the motion said, you know, a project that covers the totality of the West Dakota Water Development District, well, that is not just Rapid City to the west, to the east, it's also Rapid City to the west. And so you get in a situation that we occasionally run into where, yeah, we are dealing with having to address water quality issues in Pipestone Creek, which heads in Minnesota. You are looking at part of the Rapid Creek watershed that heads in Lawrence County.
Right.
And as the map shows, you don't go there. And there are opportunities that could be out there.
Actually Box Elder Creek.
Box, yeah, Box Elder, God knows where all the water comes from, so. Anyway, that's something that might be out there, you might wanna file that away as these things develop. I don't know that that's necessarily in Representative Odenbach's immediate plans, probably not, but-
He was taking notes.
He was taking notes.
Cause you had-
Yeah, I would just add, well, first I wanna say, I happened to be in appropriations when Representative Odenbach and Jay did the testimony for twelve thirty-five and, um, it, it, I think there was a great deal of interest, but so many things got voted down appropriations-wise, so, um, and, and the one, I think silver lining was that, uh, the ARPA money, there's a lot of people trying to get that money, uh, timber industry, other things like that, and, um, ultimately it went to water projects and wastewater, so.
That's good.
It's very good, I believe, so. But I was going to say, I've got a map that shows the old Black Hills Conservancy Sub-District, um, and that, that's the group that got the future use permit that you just renewed. And it include Lawrence County, Mead, um, and, and went down south too, so, you know, taking a look at those old boundaries would be, we could ask for a resident historian why it got narrowed down to West Dakota only, where, where the boundaries are now versus the original boundary of Black Hills Conservancy Sub-District or maybe-
The whole state used to be covered by a sub-district, there were six of them.
Well, there was still big gaps in western and southern Florida, but-
No, but there were other sub-districts that covered those areas, western and the Black Hills, and then Jankel in the eighties threw all that out and put in the, the smaller development area, supposedly development area of districts that we have now.
So, so anyway, there's small boundaries out there that'd be fun to look at and that sort of thing.
Anyway, I, I think i, if, if there is interest, and I know the conversation has come up from time to time, there might be a toll hold in Lawrence County right now. Danner and, and Paul didn't go into it as much, or Paul and Chris didn't talk about today, but, um-
What was the meeting you had earlier today?
Pardon?
What was the meeting you had earlier today where these guys were there?
Oh, well, the Danner guys met with some of the, with Dan in the other group.
Oh.
We just met, yeah, but I mean, um, the, the Watership Protection Program is very much interested, uh, it sits right now, most of the three-nineteen work has been done East River because, and there was a nice article in the paper, thank you, Searchlight, um, talking about the fact that our waters are in trouble and your waters are not, and we'd like to keep it that way. For obvious reasons, the state's invested a lot of money in trying to fix problems, but they also need to start investing in protecting because it's a lot less money.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier and a lot cheaper, uh, to do that.
Yeah.
You know, in the case of the project that's being discussed for you guys, the tolls funded solids, which would be the erosion issue, doesn't start until Farmingdale. Everything upstream of that is okay, but we wanna keep it that way.
Right.
Not let it go to hell and then come back in and fix it. It's a lot easier, trust me, of dealing with the, once it's broken, problem out west, so. Anyway, that is an option that is out there on the table, um, with both the work that, that was done, McCook actually voted to join Vermillion Basin. The transfer of those parts of my district that are in yellow up there right now was done legislatively. And so we've got kind of a roadmap and at least a group of folks who are familiar with what, what might be involved, and we understand the mechanics a lot better now than we did a couple of years ago, so.
How would the Forest Service be involved? Do they, do they have any say in? How would the Forest Service be involved? Do they have any say in these boundaries?
Something like this, Water Development District? No.
They don't. Because I mean, a big chunk of that's in, is federal land.
That's the South Dakota.
The counties that represented in the lower, in the way.
This is simply a political system that was set up, you know?
We didn't change.
Originally.
We screwed up. It wasn't the, the, you know, that map up there. Lincoln and Union, the two little white counties at the bottom, were part of the East Dakota Conservancy Sub-District. And that would have remained the same. It was the Owahhe stuff that the governor was after. Unfortunately, there was a disagreement between the board, my board at that time, and one of the Lincoln County Rural Water Systems and Senator Sheekwin, the elder.
Raleigh.
Raleigh, took it out. And they've regretted it, I think, at several levels ever since. But everything to the west of East Dakota was, as Scott said, there was the Black Hills Conservancy Sub-District. There was the Owahhe District, which was sort of everything north of Highway 14 and east of us, except the far northeast corner. And there was the Lower James Vermillion thing and there were a couple of others that were all geared toward these planned giant irrigation projects coming off the river that were a big problem. Uphill Against Water, a very good book, you can ever read. They all went away. But the framework made sense and we survived as water development districts. It's still out there. But the rationale for a Black Hills Conservancy, Black Hills Water Development District is...
It's a strong rationale. It's a very strong rationale.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you get in areas like Rapid City where by virtue of the way this is set up, and this is why we have $700,000, we can generate greater tax revenues, but we have fewer projects we can find to spend it on. The worst effect of Rapids here. Well, we've got some cooking. We'll see. Who provides the water for the new men's prison?
Good question.
It's a Lincoln County, right?
Lincoln County, one of the rural water systems maybe. Won't be Lewis and Clark, at least not directly.
Isn't that a big chunk of ARPA money that was on top of the 89 million is going for that, about 25 million?
It for the prison?
Water and wastewater.
There was, there was 130. Scott's, the magic number in 1235, there was just a hair over 130 million of available ARPA money. Up in the end, just under 100.
Yep.
66 went to 12.
Who got 5 million for that?
I don't remember.
Because we were supposed to have 94 and then it went to 81.
Somebody did have, anyway.
Yeah, anyway, some...
For one or another, everything got allocated this session.
Yes, all of the money should be, is allocated this session. And I would guess that a huge chunk of it, all the ARPA money will be gone. Not at the March meeting, but I'm sure at the June meeting. It'll be awarded.
And has to be executed by December 31st, '26.
'26.
'26, yeah. Has to be obligated by the end of this calendar year. Has to be spent. And they're front-loading a lot of the grant loan pack. They're paying everything with grant money to burn that down. So they'll be swift transitioning. Occasionally, they'll say, well, as you burn down your grant, you have to take out your loan money. They're going to forego that and spend it.
All right, well, thanks for the update. Well, you got to...
So Jay, I'm just curious, CO2 pipeline, have any other implications, requirements that you know of?
A pipe is a pipe. My concern is mostly related to crossings of existing facilities. Both of the systems now, one of which is now pulled out, have not been tremendously easy to work with. And so we'll see what happens. I mean, there are, there are rural water systems that, yeah. I mean, any number of utilities that have stuff buried in the ground that'll be along the pathway. And so that'll be an interesting thing to do. Another issue is going to be tiling out there, tile lines.
Yeah, I was wondering if there were requirements for water to run the equipment for the gap, for the liquefaction of the CO2.
Oh, yes. They need a fair whack of water. The, it's not a lot, but it's not a trivial amount. And there was a request by one of the ethanol plant at Redfield for 20 million eight gallons a year or something like that, which sounds like an outrageous amount of water. Turns out, it's not really that much. Wouldn't want to have to drink it, but it's a very manageable thing. But none of the regional, there wasn't, Mid-Dakota couldn't provide them with that level of water, so they were going after a water right for that purpose. And that opened up a whole big can of worms, which went away when the permit was denied, but will presumably come back if these pipelines come back in through here. It's, they need a lot of water, but it's not a tremendous amount of water. You pencil out what 20 million gallons a year works out to, but it's not very much. So.
All right, well, I think we've covered about a lot of character. Meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming, everybody.